All right, we're gonna call it to order. Can we please have roll call?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Shaker.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gurnell.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Andrew McGuire is present remotely.
All right. Item two, discussion regarding the proposed five-year capital improvement plan, which will, it just went away, which will do something. It's gonna be really nice. Oh, which will include a review of the comprehensive roads, capital improvement needs and costs, followed by a proposed five-year CIP plan for streets, water, sewer, and general fund.
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
I see more than three slides there, just so you know.
Well, it's a study session, so I get three extra, right?
Never.
No? Okay. Uh, well, we're here to present the, the five-year CIP plan. We concentrated on streets. So first, I wanna introduce some folks, in case you don't know them, that helped me work on this plan. Besides, of course, town manager and, and finance and staff. We have, uh, Mark Davis, our street superintendent, and Paul Smith is our street foreman. So they were a big part in helping. They're the boots on the ground that tell me where all the roads are, are worse, because they're the ones out there shoveling them and taking care of them, so. Uh, it was a complete effort with, hopefully, everybody included, uh, trying to work this out. So, so we had a big session, and we looked at kind of what the whole network of town roads would be and what our ideal solution would be if money was no object, is what we did first. So we came up with about eighty-six million dollars to fix everything, an ultimate solution. And we know that's not achievable, but what that would have is you've got about five million in design, give or take four million in right-of-way for some of the widening. And that included ten million dollars in, in utilities, extending some of the sewer and water that we wanna do along with the roads. So, and then road construction, about sixty-seven million. So you can divide that up into, uh, so I guess over ten years, that would be about nine million a year, so we don't get that budget, we know that. Um, if you look at it with the arterials or the major roads versus the, the neighborhood roads or the local roads, about fifty million of that is in the major roads, which carry most of the traffic. Then about thirty-six million is some of our local roads that we're starting to see, uh, falling apart, for lack of a better term. So, this is a breakdown of some of the projects of that, like I said, that, that ultimate wish list. Um, we've got Road One East in front of, uh, Territorial School. Uh, ideally, we'd be able to put some sewer under that as well, um, but we didn't include that here. Uh, Reed Road sees a lot of traffic and it's starting to fall apart. We did part of it, but it's north of the section that was rebuilt three or four years ago. Uh, Perkinsville Road is quickly becoming a safety issue. It's so bad, uh, due to all the truck traffic. Downside is there aren't many residences out that way. Uh, Road One West needs some work. Road Four North on both the west side of the highway and the east side of the highway needs work. Um, on the east side of the highway, we also need to straighten out some of those dogleg intersections and get that to be, uh, more of a commercial or industrial street leading to the, to the business park area at Jerome Junction. Um, there's also Center Street, east of One East, where the power poles are in the middle of the road. We need to get those power poles out of the road at some point. And as, uh, Mark and I were talking about earlier, it's not getting any cheaper. Um, and then again, Five North is even starting to see some decay and some rutting. Uh, even though it's on the border over town, it's still there. And then this is a list of a bunch of the neighborhoods. Uh, I can go through them as we got maps further on, so. Uh, the way we based some of this ultimate section was staff, uh, including planning and zoning and town management and public works, developed, uh, this map of what the major roads ideally would look like. Um, so in the more center section of town, kinda east of One West, uh, ideally, you might have three-lane roads with bike lanes and sidewalks. Only where the areas where there's high density of population, your eastern neighborhoods, Chino Meadows, Highlands Ranch, Bright Star, and around the schools. Uh, in the core area of town, between Perkinsville and Two North, uh, you see these checkerboards added, and what that would do is on the busier roads, you would use a ten-foot wide sidewalk or multi-use path that allows the bikes and gets the bicycle traffic off of the roadway. Um, I know these are expensive, but it's, it's the goal to achieve. Uh, actually, the Perkinsville Forty-four development is building half of this section number two right now. Uh, the power lines are down and they're about to remove the poles, and they'll widen out the road and put the pathway on the north side of Perkinsville as part of their development. Um, when you get out into the bigger lot sections of town and the more rural sections of town with the one acre plus, you'll see, uh, section number three, which is the blue, the blue roads. And it's our basic two-lane roads you see now, but we're adding a, a little wider paved shoulder, which will give cars room to get off if they break down, or if people need to walk or something, they can use that shoulder. And it also provides more pavement for putting out garbage cans and such, so you're not tearing up the edges of the road. It's bad that we see a lot with, especially with garbage trucks, when they stop. Everywhere they stop, you'll see potholes and edge failures. And then the checkerboard section for planning is where we have, uh, unpaved pathways in section number four. So it's basically the same as three, except we add a, a gravel or some sort of pathway to connect a more of a trail system, uh, mostly around the boundaries of the town and the outskirts of town. And it would, uh, provide a place to walk or bike, or even, even equestrians can use that, um, with the unpaid pathway, so. That is the, the eighty-six million pie-in-the-sky view. So, uh, what we'll be looking at ideally with that is looking at road conditions. So next year, we'll utilize the pavement management system. And as you can see, the slide, uh, the picture on the left depicts kinda what a pavement section goes through when it degrades over time. So it starts out good. Uh, PCI stands for Pavement Condition Index. Just think of it as the grade from zero to a hundred of the road. But it starts out good, and the more treatments you get up top in the green are your, your chip seals and your crack seal treatments, and those are cheaper, and you can keep the roads in the green. What we're seeing a lot around town is you're down this steep curve where the road falls apart very quickly. And so if you can overlay it, as this curve shows, up at the top of the curve for a dollar, it avoids you getting to the bottom where a lot of our roads are now, in that four to five dollars, uh, compared to the one dollar. So that's the goal of the pavement management. We're not there yet. We're working on it. And to the right kinda shows, um, what you would look at with budgets, so what you'll see next year, so, uh, for example, I think the, the red line is kinda what this group does for their steady-state budget of keeping the roads where they're at. And different levels of funding, you can increase or lower the condition of the roads. So once we get the roads rated and everything done next year, we can provide all this information, so you can actually see what different dollar amounts do to the conditions of the roads. And we get a lot better scientific, objective criteria for that. But until then, we're just working on our, our judgment and experience. So again, this is the needs for the major streets, um, pie in the sky. And this is more of the reality we're, we're looking at right now. So this map shows about seven projects that, that staff is looking at as for the, for the major arterial roads. And these dollar amounts are based off just basically replacing or repairing the pavement that's there now. It's not adding any extra lanes, any curb, anything like that. It's doing what we can with the money we have now. So, uh, the next projects besides what we've already got bid, we're looking at, uh, East Road Two North, that's from about the car wash across the intersection of One East, past Bonnie Plant to Pepper Tree. And we just wanna overlay that for now, and we may actually try to add that into the, the current project that's out there. Let's see if the contractor can do that. So if we can fit that change order into this project and get it done this summer, uh, we'll bring that change order to council for approval. Um, the next road in the priority is, is Road One East. And that starts at Juniper, just south of Two North, and goes up past Territorial School by the pool to Perkinsville Road. So we may overlay the intersection to Band-Aid it for the winter. And then next year, when we do One East, we'll completely rebuild that intersection. There's pipes under there we need to look at. And, uh, so One East, we're planning to, to rebuild One East in front of the school there. Between Two North and One East, those are pretty heavily traveled roads. And, uh, we're starting to see a, a lot of degradation, especially in that intersection. Um, another road that's starting to see a lot of where we talked, I talked about earlier, Reed Road on the, on the west side of town. It's on the edge of town, but the whole road is the towns. Um, about one and a half miles of that needs reconstruction. We did between Center Street and One North in eighteen or nineteen. Um, but the rest of it is starting to get pretty bad, and with the traffic amounts we see there, that's where we see this as a high priority. Uh, Perkinsville Road, as I said, it's a big project. It's actually about three million dollars worth. Uh, it's been bad since I started here in seventeen, and it's not getting any better. It's to the point where it's beyond needing replacing. But again, the, the problem with that is it doesn't benefit many town residents. It's mainly commercial traffic, but it's still a town road that we need to look after. And it does lead into Old Home Manor in the shooting range amongst the other commercial interests. And the, and the nine eleven memorial as well is out there, so. Um, Road Four North, we've got that from One West over to Maricopa. It's really took a turn after this winter. Uh, it was really bad. We've got some money, uh, contributed from the developer that went out there, but that doesn't cover the whole project. But it's, we actually, when we chip sealed that road in eighteen, we held off on the section in front of the new development, knowing that development was going in. But that road is to the point where it needs work. Um, got Road One West down on the south part of town. It needs attention. Um, again, Center Street with the power poles is one of our project from One East to, we'll probably go all the way to the end with that project. This map shows to Cactus Ren, but might as well take it to the end if you're doing it. Um, and then the East Road Four North with the right-of-way is number seven up here, which gets you from the highway to the business, to where the Economic Development Authority grant ended, right about Arizona Trail, where El Charo Norte is. And we still need to not forget about Old Highway Eighty-Nine. It's still a town road, even though it's up north. It needs some work, probably some sort of treatment with an overlay. And the outer loop, we chip sealed that a few years ago, but that's wearing out already, so it probably needs some sort of overlay treatment as well. Um, so that's about thirteen million dollars versus fifty million. So it's, it's more of a reality check. Um, so for local streets, you see our wishful thinking is about thirty-six million. This doesn't include any utilities in it. But we did, uh, have a couple places we'd recommend utilities. We mentioned on here, Luna Estates. That's the neighborhood behind, uh, McDonald's and, uh, Up and Smoke Barbecue, the areas west of Highway Eighty-Nine, from Perkinsville, Palomino, Butterfield, those roads. Um, be nice to get utilities to at least the commercial properties over there, maybe help economically. And another one with utilities we would need to consider is Yavapai Mobile Home Estates. That's the neighborhood behind Bonfire. Uh, that's a tight neighborhood, and they're all on septic now, so at some point, we need to get those on sewer, just like the Chino Meadows neighborhoods we did years ago. But all of these neighborhoods, the Chino Meadows, One and Two, those roads were done when the sewer was put in about eighteen to twenty years ago now. So they've well outlasted what a chip seal road should do. Um, again, Luna Estates is west. Sunrise is the neighborhood by, up by El Charo Norte. All the state-name streets, California, Arizona. That one got hit really hard with the big two-foot snowstorm we had and lost a lot of the pavements there. Uh, Chino Lakes is the neighborhood, uh, west of the Appaloosa Meadows neighborhoods. It's Maricopa and all those streets between One West and Reed Road, kinda north between Three and Four. And, uh, Vista Grande, well, let me show you the map. Uh, so I can talk about these things, but Chino Meadows, One and Two is the red and the yellow. Um, Chino Lakes is the light blue four, and the Sunrise subdivision is also the light blue four. Um, Luna Estates is the green that I was talking about behind McDonald's and such. Uh, Vista Grande is down here in the southeast, kind of at the end of, of Road One South. It's an older chip seal neighborhood, and the roads have actually held up really well for their age. And Yavapai Mobile Home Estates is the blue number five at the bottom. And we threw in here also to continue extending Rodeo Drive, um, even though it's mostly used by the town. The, the, the college uses it for their CDL course with the trucks, and it's chip seal, and it's not holding up to the truck traffic between the town forces and the, and the college. And, uh, we need to, when we're expanding utilities, also rebuild the road through there as funds allow. So what does that mean? Here's our proposed, uh, basically a ten- or eleven-year program that we proposing as a priority list. So like I said, we start off with, um, this should actually be East Road Two North, so sorry for the typo there. But that's a Two North overlay. We split that out because we're hoping to piggyback that into this year's project. And then take time to design One East and maybe construct it. Uh, we could construct it in the spring. Might wanna talk about the school year and, and maybe wait till after school to build that one. Um, after that, we would design and construct that one and a half miles of Reed Road. Then, uh, Perkinsville Road, this is only about half of Perkinsville Road, and then right below it is the other half, so that would take two years to do Perkinsville Road at about a million and a half dollars a pop. Um, so then we go into West Road Four North, um, from west of One West there. And, uh, then maybe start working in some of the neighborhoods and go into Chino Meadows. It's a four-million-dollar project, but throw what money we can at it um, for a year and start with some of those streets. Um, come back and do Road One West on the south end of town. Uh, tackle Center Street, and then come back in Chino Meadows for another phase and see what we can get. Um, then East Road Four North and Outer Loop. I know it's a long list, but it's a list we've got. Um, and again, next year with the pavement management, maybe we'll have a, a better plan that we can use some, maybe some alternative or different treatments and, and hopefully spread the dollars out a little better. Um, but this plan for now will get us, uh, streets that are good twenty-year design streets and should last a while with, with proper crack seal and other types of maintenance. Um, should I stop for questions at this point or keep going?
Mayor, if I could. Um, so it was a really great exercise that we did, um, as a team and a real reality check, like, um, Frank has said. But right now, with the current funding levels that we've been able to have, and I know Joe's out here if we have questions about that, but the one and a half million is sort of the reality where we are today. In the upcoming budget, and we're gonna have that meeting next Wednesday, um, we'll be talking about, um, the possibility of having some additional funding in the coming year, where we have some one-time funding. That'll be something that you guys will discuss, so maybe we could accelerate a project or, or something like that. But I think the, the true reality is until the town gets an additional funding source in, this, this will be the level of funding that we, um, are able to throw at, at the roads. And I do commend them for coming up with the reality of how much we can do, but the piece we do, we're gonna do right. We're not just gonna chip seal it or something like that, like Frank just mentioned. It's gonna be a nice roadway that, that will stand up to the test of time. So just wanted to throw that out there.
All right, questions? Question, question?
Frank, um, the equipment that the town has, can it do some of this without putting out bids for other companies?
Typically.
For the really bad roads?
Uh, the short answer is no with the equipment we have. We're not set up with the size crew we need or the equipment to, to do some of the hot asphalt paving that's needed here. Uh, we did invest, I believe, last year, Mark, in the roller. So we do have a roller now to do some of the heavier-duty patching, um, that we can maybe get a load of hot mix here and there. Uh, one disadvantage we have is our, uh, for, for patching, especially with hot mixes, our asphalt supply comes from, uh, Prescott Valley. So if we don't use it quickly, by the time it gets here, it cools off. So it's, it's mainly, we use it for, like, if we needed to do an intersection-type work. So some of the intersections, we could, we could try and tackle if we had right traffic control. Again, uh, an intersection like Two North and One East would probably need a contractor to come in and have the resources to get traffic control and everything, so it's so busy. There's also a component of, uh, state law. There's a formula.
Yeah.
Oh. So, sorry. Andrew, I think you're live.
Well, I, I was just laughing, Frank, because I was gonna break in if you didn't get to that.
Oh, okay. Well, why don't I let you explain it?
Uh, there, just for the, the benefit of the council, Mayor and councilors, we have two things, two encumbrances to self-perform work. One is that over a certain dollar threshold, uh, you are prohibited from doing a work other than through the procurement methods allowed by the state. So you have to use a, a low-bid process if you're gonna do most of the kind of work we do or one of the alternative procurement methods. Uh, part two of that is that there is a small exception that allows you for, um, horizontal construction, which roadways fall within that category, um, to do a small amount of it self-performed where you don't go out and bid it. And it's a, a formula that's calculated based upon the annual price deflator, and it is thankfully kept by the league, and we can tap into it whenever we want, but it's somewhere around a couple hundred thousand dollars is your max.
So yeah, so in, in my terms, we could do up to about two hundred thousand dollars worth of work on our own if we had the right equipment before the Contractors Association would get after us.
I have a question for you, Frank. On, uh, if you go back to your list of, uh, maybe it's back one or two slides, but yeah, rodeo drive right there. Whoop, you can go back forward. You pat, right there. Um, I understand rodeo drive is, is, it's bad. I drive it often. Um, but don't you think the priorities of that, we could move that money over to more, uh, used streets by citizens than just, that's three-point-seven million, which is two years' worth of, of the one-point-fives.
Right.
Than the two years of the one-point-fives.
And that's why we kinda set it off to the side without a, I guess it's number six, but, uh, uh, it's kind of in its own category because it's.
Okay, well, I, I didn't, didn't know if that, it was on, on your other list too, if you went forward to the last one you were on.
Oh, so we, we do keep that in because it's part of the Old Home Manor Master Plan that was developed and for, for some of the economic development reasons. But we also understand, at least at the staff level, that, that that's dependent on money's available and I think the intent with rodeo is to kinda let, or help, let the development out there help pay for that as it goes and to, to use that money as it's there. So that would be completely up to council and, and personally.
Okay, I would just, the only quit, the only input I had.
Yeah, I would support the discretion and leaning towards the neighborhoods and the where the people live as much as possible.
Mayor.
I was just thinking a more ban, you know, the more usage per person, per dollar versus convenience for city and trucks and college.
Yeah, that's a great question. And remember also that if we are able to sell that land, we would use that to, the money from selling that land, that's been one of council's, um, direction, is to use the money from the sale of land to put in the infrastructure out there. So it would be, have its own, its own funding source.
Any more questions down here?
Yeah, see, Road One West on the south end of town. I mean, Road One West on the north end of town from the school to Road Three North. I mean, you guys live and work right in that area, and it's terrible. And I know the trash trucks and the school buses and the trucks that don't wanna stay on Eighty-Nine are helping to tear it up, but, I mean, you gotta drive it every day, and so does a lot of the town, and they are really starting to home in on that.
Right, and that's another road, that one and, and Three North over by the, the north campus, kinda west of, between One West and Reed. We're starting to see that road alligator some too, and those types of cracks. And they're not even on this list per se, but they could use attention and, you know, maybe we can Band-Aid them with some chip seal or something, uh, until we get some of these other roads that are probably in worse shape. Um, but that's, that's another plug for, for kinda working the pavement management program. It will rate those roads, and you can compare their grades and kinda see where they're at. And we can look at the traffic levels too, because we, we count the traffic on all these roads, so we have that to put in the mix too.
Sounds good. Look forward to seeing that.
John?
Aaron, can you expand that screen so I can look at the map a little closer?
Oh.
Frank? Correct me if I'm wrong. You, you, an RFQ was already done, and you've already awarded the contract. That was for One East. Am I, am I correct?
Yeah, the current contact from Fletcher Court to, uh, Three South.
Okay, so that's, that wasn't mentioned because that's already in the works.
Right, that's our fiscal year twenty-three, which includes, um, the south part of One East. It's got a piece of One South from the highway to One East. Is that the fire station on One South?
It's Two South.
The bank is it?
Bank.
On One South.
I get them mixed up. And then we're gonna try and do some of these cul-de-sacs off of Perkinsville that are so bad.
And in, and most of your projects, the estimates today, I understand they're today. I heard you say a few times, you also, that your hope is that that will include utilities, right, or infrastructure underneath those roads, right? That's why the costs look high, or is that just for the overpayment?
Of that eighty-six million.
Yeah.
Uh, wishful thinking, about ten million of that included utilities.
Okay.
So the, these roads that we're estimating here are based off our most recent bid, that one you just mentioned with One East and everything. Our, the road part of it, it was four-point-three million. Almost exactly half of that was the utility work, the sewer, under One East. But the other part of it worked out to, these are all two-lane roads, and it worked out to about, just about a million a mile, so. And these numbers don't include inflation as the years go on.
Right, right. I understand what right-of-way is, but on, on your earlier slides, I saw substantial amounts for right-of-way, and there was figures. Can you help me understand what that, what that means?
The, it's acquiring the property, the right-of-way.
Okay.
Some places in town, we don't own enough roadway. Some places, we actually don't own.
It's spotty.
Hold your ears, Andrew, any of it. Um, but, uh, like, for example, on this, uh, orange Road Four North, it would be getting the, the, the actual property, the right-of-way, to straighten out that road and then have the, the right to build that road inside the new right-of-way. So, uh, that's based, and some of that is, uh, on their initial slide with eighty-six million. Those are, all those road sections I showed are based off an eighty foot right away. And the right away now in town varies between zero. And usually fifty feet. So almost every case, we would need to widen out to go to eighty. That's why you see when we rezone subdivisions, we ask for that eighty footer right away. To try and get to that goal for those future widening of sections.
And then this is a question for you Cindy. Um, with this, all this infrastructure funding that's, you know, supposedly out there. Is there any way to tie in any of our road projects and infrastructure? Together while trying to seek any of those funds? I don't know if I, I asked it correctly or not, but.
I know what you're saying, but that's, that's a great question. And we will look for any, any funding source so we can get. Maggie is out looking for funding all the time. She gets a little bit every year. And the great thing about going through this exercise and having these lists together, now we know where we need to ask for money. Where before it was kinda year to year, we were going for it. But we can look to the future and see what funding we need in three years or, you know, explain that thing. That, that type, those types of things to the USDA and, and other people, the federal monies available. And let them know what we, what our needs are.
Is it, is there, does it look like there's suitable availability today based on that huge amount that? What was that bill called? The Reduction Act?
So I, uh, mayor council, I will say that we had a bit, big influx of money that came from the federal government. That's why we've been able to do um, a big chunk of road, chunks of roadway over the last couple of years, but. That's, that's dried up. Th- those monies aren't no longer available, but there will be funding available and we will continue to look for grant funds as, as we can.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sherry, do you have anything?
Nope.
You guys are good. Hey, I got a question for Joe, real quick.
Okay. Real quick, if I could add in on the grant thing, for example, one of the grant avenues we're pursuing is some of the improvements with the flooding at the Perkinsville Road and Granite Creek Crossing. So we're seeking state and federal money to help improve that crossing and, and Maggie's, like she said, is working on some grants. She got us a little money for the rodeo drive improvements that was done and she's still working some of the Perkinsville improvements. We're trying to get utilities across the highway. She's getting some grant money for that. So uh, it's coming in, it's not enough, but we take what we can get.
All you can do.
Alright, Mr. Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Duffy, just on a whim, if we were to borrow ninety million dollars. What would the annual payment be? And for how long?
More than we can afford, sir.
I understand that, but I just wanna, I'm just throwing it out there.
Oh. I would estimate, top of my head, six, seven million dollars a year.
Six to seven million a year?
Yeah.
That's all I'm looking for.
With current interest rates.
And for how many years?
Uh, probably a twenty to twenty, you're gonna borrow it for twenty or twenty-five years. The problem with borrowing for roadwork, you, you don't wanna borrow longer than the asset is gonna survive or be a useful asset. So that's the problem with road, you know, sewer lines, they last for fifty, a hundred.
I just know that question's gonna be asked and I wanted to get some.
I can do a calculation for you to get it pretty close.
That's good enough for me.
Yeah, it's off top my head, sir.
Okay, thank you. I tell you what, you do the first year and I won't do the second. Alright, is that it? Is you guys done?
So we've got a. That's about it with the roads. You want me to hit water and sewer real quick?
Okay, sorry.
And, but before you start, I will say, um, so they did a, we've done a lot of work on roads this year, a lot of exercises with the team and getting this work prepared. Um, we haven't done quite as much work on the, um, water and sewer side as far as putting the the dollar amount and the planning together, but that's something we continue to work on.
Okay.
That'll all be established during, that, that would be established during the master water plan, correct?
Mayor Council, that's right. I failed to mention that, but I think that was part of um, Frank's presentation.
Sure.
But yes, that is true.
That's awesome. Uh, so with the, with the water and again, these are also gonna be placeholders because as, as council member McCafferty alluded to, um, we're in contract negotiations right now with the, with the leading firm. For, we call it an integrated water master plan and that's a fancy word for, for water and sewer master plan. But we also include storm water in that. So that's the integration. We look at. Freshwater, sewer water, storm water and, and here in the Prescott AMA, our recharge water that we use. So all of those will be included. So it's not just the pipes in the ground, it's also the resources that we're looking at uh, with that master plan. And one of the outputs of that plan. It's about a year long project, so we're desperately hoping to have some capital improvement plan stuff to look at for next year's budget. It's gonna be a tight schedule, but we're trying to uh, to make that schedule for next year. But in the interim for this year, we've got uh, some, some money allocated uh, for capital projects. We've got some uh. Some money set aside for possibly some new wells and reservoirs. And then uh, Water Main, we've got a. The road one east project is what we've got. Actually going now. So that Water Main from one east from Fletcher Court to three south is actually under contract now. So um, and that's some Recovery Act money. I think Joe or. We're using the money somewhere, but that Recovery Act money can go to utilities. So that's some of the work for utilities. We're also under design for extending the water and sewer. On Perkinsville Road underneath the highway. Um, we had a little bit of a delay there trying to figure out how to get under the highway. But now uh, some of the property owners uh, are willing to, to talk to us about some easements to to get that sewer and water under the highway. So uh, that design is moving forward once again. And uh, the new fill station we purchased, we hope to install that with the next fiscal year. Uh, we should be putting that on Jerome Junction and Gavin Court. That's over by the powder coat place. Kind of the bottom left corner of the business park if you're looking at a map. But that way they can just kinda pull off Jerome Junction, fill up and it'll have a fill stand too for some of the commercial haulers. And there's a water and sewer right there. We figured that's one of the best out of the way locations. To fill up especially for the commercial haulers. Uh, we'd like to get it on the west side of town where most of the water needs are, but our network just doesn't go that far yet.
Is the one on two north gonna be disbanded?
Not at this time, but it can always be moved if we get a better location. Say if we uh, convert that old agricultural well over by animal control in the fleet shop, we've got an old well there. For example, if that well money's used to convert that to a municipal well, we could possibly move a fill station over to the north campus and get it out of that commercial corridor there. Um, one thing I'd look to do immediately, once we get the second fill station online is shut that one down for a little bit. And fix the dang road that is torn up there from all the water sitting. But you can't shut it down to fix the road because people need the water. So we need another location they can draw from. So uh, we're hoping to get that fill station in the early part of next year's budget. Get some concrete poured for the new fill station, then come back and fix the road behind Walgreens there. And for the next couple of years at least, that, have that fill station there until it really needs to be moved with the development over there. At some point, it's gonna, development's gonna kinda force it out of there.
Are there more people, do you believe that are using haul water on the west side than the east?
Uh, that's my personal belief.
So it would make sense to have a station over on that side. So maybe your idea of the, near the animal place would make sense.
Right, that's, that's where we see most of, with the. With the way the water's dropping about two, two and a half feet a year on average. Some of the west, more western wells are the, especially the older, more shallow ones are starting to dry up and, and some people couldn't afford to drill wells anyway. And you see that. Not only within town limits, but some of the county residents outside of town limits, west of Reed. I think we've figured out. Of the residential customers, two thirds of those that use the fill station are outside of town limits. It's hard to judge with the commercial haulers, cause they use their business address for the accounts. So uh, just from the way talking to our resource consultant, Mark Holmes, and knowing the geology on the western side of town, it's, it's a little bit harder to find water. And the east side of town has a little bit better. Uh, the wells are a little bit shallower. And the further north you go, um, the water gets closer and closer to the surface, cause Sullivan Lake is kinda the low point. And that's where the groundwater almost hits the surface or used to hit the surface anyway. So everything flows north in Chino Valley. So it's kinda like the Nile River, all the water pretty much drains north. So I would say that typically the, the customers that need to haul are usually on the west side. Not always because they might not be able to afford a well or something and would haul somewhere on the east, but most of our private water companies. Are uh, in the middle of town or on the east side. That serve the, the higher density neighborhoods. It's usually your larger acre. Uh, lots that you either serve by well or hauling water. So that's, really we don't have too much more looking for the master plan to show us how to develop the water system. And maybe even look, eventually I would always say anywhere we can work with other companies. I know it's a controversial issue, but start acquiring some of these uh, private companies or other municipalities inside the town would, would build up our system, but that's a whole nother can of worms right now. So on the sewer side, we're looking at uh, mainly improvements around the plant. We've got some drying beds we've been putting off. And at this point, we're probably gonna look for designing the plant expansion to make sure. What the drying beds are is, is when we use our vector truck to clean out manholes or something. You put that material in a, basically a concrete basin. And the water can be pumped into the plant for treatment and then lets all the paper towels or whatever dry out. And we scoop that up, put it in the dumpster and haul it off. And that's what the, the drying beds are for. And the filters or the filters we use in the plant, uh, we did a big clean and replace this year, which bought us a few years on those, but they're probably a half a million dollars once we replace them. We might be able to stretch that out. Depending on the expansion of the plant. Again, the one east sewer line, that project's underway. Uh, the plant expansion, we should be having a, a memo. We're doing basically a cost benefit analysis right now with some consultants to determine. How much expansion we need at the plant. Is it the right location where we're at? Is that the best place to put our money? And the, and the, the treatment type, the, the MBR, or is there some other type of treatment that might be more economical at this point? And once we get the results from that, we'll go out for design consultants. To figure on expansion of the plant. And we'll, we'll bring all that to council for you guys to review. And then the expansion's a big thing and then the sewer, um, like I said, the sewer down one east, trying to get towards Yavapai Mobile Home Estates. And also that gets us that much closer to, to road four south and the highway, which would be a big economic driver. If we could get sewer down there for some of those potential businesses. And then again, sewer along with water across the highway at Perkinsville would open up some of that area for looping water systems and, and connecting sewer. And uh, and whatever the master plan. Kicks out. Uh, the master plan's gonna be a good planning document that you can go off of. It still needs to be updated every few years. But it would be a good uh, living, breathing, working document that we can work off of. And uh, I guess the only thing I didn't mention is if you're wondering what an INI survey is, that's infiltration and inflow. So right now we see up to fifty or sixty thousand extra gallons of water come into the plant. During storms. And what we're doing with this survey is trying to find where, where that water's coming in. Um, if it's breaks in the line or manholes that aren't sealed properly or, or something like that. That's what that study will do and that'll help us gain that much more time to, to design for the expansion of the plant. And it's just good quality, cause too much fresh water actually hurts your plant. So um, it can flush out all the, all the good bugs in the plant that are working. So. Uh, we need to keep that to a minimum. So that's what INI stands for. Kinda wish we had done it this last monsoon season. We had a good monsoon season, but. You know what Joe says, we, I spend too much money already in the sewer system, so. It's a, it's a lot of money and it's probably, Joe, is it probably one of the biggest spenders in the town? No? Well, besides the PD station. But uh. So the sewer plant expansion will probably outspend the PD station, so. So that's what we're looking at there.
Okay, questions over here? How about over here? None? Thank you. Oh, Eric, I forgot you're here. Go ahead, Eric. You had questions?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, no, not right now.
Okay. Alright. Sherry?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Seconded, all in favor? I were adjourned, we'll be back in fifteen minutes.
Which one?